Mr. Endo, are you available?
I'm trying to figure out how to open my camera.
Yeah, we need this camera on.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are able to hear you.
I'm not sure what to do about my camera.
Okay, Mr. Endo, how about you just open up with prayer first and then we, before the meeting continues, when we, before we do votes, we just need your camera on, yeah? Is that okay?
Hopefully, I can figure it out. Okay. You want me to pray now?
Go ahead, Mr. Endo.
Okay, let's pray. While I do thank you for this evening, I thank you for all the things you are doing, not only in the state but across this nation. We do pray that you make Waina great, that you would guide us, guide us as a board, guide us as a people of Waina that will do your calling and help the people of Waina in this state. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Endo. Before we move on, we're gonna do approval of minutes, the meeting minutes. We're gonna defer the December minutes because it's still not correct, but we're gonna go ahead and vote for approving the February regular minutes. Has everyone been able to review the February minutes?
Yeah. Here is Colley. The, one of the presentations has the wrong presenter's name on it. And it should say, Mahili. She said Mahili Kuakahi, Hawaiian language, instead of Lokahi Bible Church or Bible School.
So we're gonna defer February's as well, right? Is what you're asking?
Yeah, if that's possible.
Okay. Any objections to this? Nope. Okay. Anybody will make a motion to defer both December and February minutes?
Chair, I'll make a motion to defer the December 3rd, 2024 and February 4th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
February 2nd.
Thank you. So both December 3rd, 2024 and February 4th, 2025 has been deferred. Thank you, Board Member Joe Jordan, Board Member Johnny May Perry. Moving on to the next part of our agenda, before I move on, so I will allow questions to HFD. Any? Okay. Any questions on the? I call for the vote to defer December 3rd and February 4th regular minutes. Any abstentions? Any noes? Motion passed, deferred. So we'll go ahead and start with the Fire Department, and I just wanted to bring it, let everybody know is because of due to time, we are gonna be allowing questions at a minute at a time, but if I would ask that HFD and HPD not answer specific questions, depending on time. Okay? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Doni. I'm a captain at the Waina Fire Station. So as far as the incident statistics for last month, February 2025, we had three structure fires, zero wildland fires, 11 deuces fires, one cooking fire, five activated alarms. As far as medical emergencies, there's 159 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, one motor vehicle, oh, sorry, six motor vehicle crashes, one mountain rescue, one has been incident. Fire safety tip for the month is smoke alarms. Smoke alarms are crucial for saving lives and play a key role in a home fire escape plan. When installed properly and maintained correctly, they provide early alerts, giving occupants the chance to have you evacuate quickly. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button, replace smoke alarms when they are 10 years old, or stop responding when tested.
Question for HFD, and if you could check on that, please. That is regarding Ala Farms and Houma Okeola, which basically has the lease for the old Waina Valley Ranch. They're supposed to be doing fire mitigation preparedness in that area. I just wanna make sure HFD is part of that fire mitigation plan.
As far as I know, we received no notification of it. I can check and make sure, I'll send an email up to Chin and check to make sure, but as far as I know, yeah, we weren't made aware of it. At least the station is.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the public or actually from my board members first? No, moving on to the public. Thank you, HFD. Moving on to HPD.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members, members of the community. Officer Pagan, the District Gate Community Policing Team, and I have your stats for February. In February, we had 29 motor vehicle thefts, six in our area, 24 burglaries, nine in our area, 92 thefts, 32 in our area, 16 unauthorized entries into motor vehicles, five in our area. There's a total of 7,152 calls for service, 3,986 in our area. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is that on Saturday, the 8th, US Attorney is holding a celebrate Safer Communities Fair at Pro Ridge. I believe it's uptown where Macy's is from 10 to 1. There's gonna be a lot of first responders, a lot of law enforcement agencies, as well as some other opportunities and boosts for people regarding safety and health, as well as vehicles for display for the kids and stuff like that. Again, it's a pro rate from 10 to 3, 10 to 1. It is free to the public. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Open to any comments, questions, or concerns?
Any comments, questions from the board? Moving to the public, any concerns from the public to HPD? None? Okay, moving forward.
I just had a question, Corporal.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead. Johnny May?
Sorry. Oh, okay. Thank you, Chair. Corporal, if there was a suspicion of child welfare endangerment and someone calls the Police Department, what, what actions does HPD do at an initial call? Or can it be called in as a welfare check? How, how is that handled?
It can be. I'm sorry, it can be called in as welfare check if there's a reason for us to, if someone reports that there's something suspicious activity or something is going on. An officer will go there, attempt to meet with the adults there. If there's a question and concern about a child, then the officer will normally ask for the ability to speak to the child or see the child. If there's anything that the officer feels that may not be right, if the, if the house doesn't seem safe, if the conditions seem unsanitary and unsafe and stuff like that, the officer can call his, either his supervisor, or what they would do is make a notification to Child Welfare Services to let them know that they're documenting a case. And then at that time, we can also check to see if there's already any type of open cases that they can follow up on that side. But we would document the case and would let them know that this report and a complaint. So people can either call 911 or they can actually call Child Welfare Services themselves, and Child Welfare Services will call us and ask us to do an initial check.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny May. Nani?
Aloha, can you hear me?
Any weekend?
Yeah. Hi Corporal, I was just wondering, the statistics that both you and HFD, sorry, I didn't get to respond to HFD as well, but the statistics that you give is that the whole Waianae Moku, is that what you're giving?
That is what we consider Waina in the sector, so it actually goes from Miley Point to Makua side.
Okay, so I hate to make your job a little bit harder, but I'm requesting that you are able to provide statistics for both Nanakuli, Waina, and a hole.
We do provide the Nanakuli stats for the, for the area of Honoka Hale up to Miley Point at the Nanakuli Board Meeting.
I understand that. I, I understand that, but we're still one Moku. Yeah, regardless if we have two boards, we're still one Moku. And so we should be aware of the whole Moku. That's just my concern. And that goes for HFD as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we are moving on on our agenda. Thank you, HPD, Corporal Pagan. I appreciate your time. Okay, any representative from Ocean Safety? Someone from Ocean Safety. Okay, before we move on to community concerns, I wanted to give an update on the other community concerns that was brought up in earlier months. Mike Eli isn't here, right? Hey, hello, Mike, how you doing? Come up, come up, Mike. So here I got your EISs for Houma Okeola and Kaala Farms. I also reviewed the agendas for them, and I do appreciate your time coming up and, and bringing all these things up. So, but I've already sent out a concern regarding this to both. That's it right there. Just a minute. Hold on. So I found the findings between the leases and your EIS. So I provided both boards the information that was found, and the EIS and the master plan did address Houma Okeola and Kaala working together. But when Dillinar did the lease, it does not incorporate the EIS or the management plans or the master plan. So they, they understand that on the board and they'll be working with that. Okay? Moving on to the other property of Waina Valley. That has actually been permitted by CRW for allow them to drill their well, as well as they have permits for everything else for grading and everything to the city. CR, it's part of Don Chang's department, CRW.
They were writing stuff.
That is the state who authorized them. So that is not, you know what I mean? You asked the question, we double check. So, on what property? I apologize, Mr. Eli, that was all brought up. Yeah, yeah, well. You guys asked us to address it and we did. Yeah.
Final voter, Chair. Final voter, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eli. I do appreciate your time. So moving on to the next issues that was brought up. So water supply, double check with the waters figured up at Tank 1. So Tank 2 is in operations, Tank 1 is still in the work order.
Final order, Chair?
Yes, Board Member Tiana.
Chair, so as I understand, per our bylaws and our Robert's Rules of Order, these items are not on the agenda. We should have addressed it under Board Business for us to give the responses back to community just for the timeliness of our meeting.
Thank you, Board Member Tiana, that was brought up with Jeff. This was supposed to be on our agenda. He said we can authorize it to run like Hawaii Kai.
Okay, so we have to vote to add them onto the agenda if that's okay, just for the sake of minutes.
Miss Wilber, thank you. I'm trying to move to this agenda really quick. Okay, these are just concerns of the community that they brought up. Okay, so I do apologize that it wasn't on the agenda. Moving on for Kahale and Makaha Rise Development, concerns over using a government's letter under John Mizuno's establish to form the Kahale in Makaha. Although community members have rooted against this in public, as well as the board had stated, two RISE that was in support of it. It is from our understanding that they're still moving forward. Do you know anything about this, sir? That one there? No. Okay, sorry. Okay, so went on to the next one. Community concerns, they're asking for school bus aids for safety and moving forward with our meeting, starting next month, it would be, it would be continued here unless we have a bigger agenda, and then at that point, we'll decide the next place. Okay? Now, moving on to regular board members, any other community concerns from our board members? If not, we're moving on to the community. Johnny May? Johnny May?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Chair, you know, there's a lot of changes, and these are swift changes that are occurring in the Oval Office. The Oval Office is the White House. And they're claiming that Social Security is a Ponzi screen. Our community is a vulnerable community. The state will be losing federal funding, which will impact our community. I think we need to call someone from the state, maybe the governor, to explain what's going on in Washington and how it's gonna impact Waina and the state of Hawaii. You know, the tariff, the tariff that is now taking into effect, thousands of federal workers just cut. That's not the America I know. We need a governor to come and talk to this community to what's going on and how it's gonna impact our community, since we have so many nonprofit organizations that rely on funding. If you could do that, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Perry. Any other board members? Moving on to community.
Great. This is Mike working, check, check. Aloha, everyone. Pikachu Shelby building it here. I know we got one minute to tell you, so I'll be real fast. I'm concerned about the politics that's going on. Polly, as many ticks is ukus, you know, they're blood-sucking parasites. And we're trying to get stuff done here. We got the agricultural bill, Dupea's Law. We have the mother and the father. If you guys know, the mother witnessed the son getting assassinated right in, on his knees inside his house. What are you gonna do when the law is already there in the HRS? The cops already know about it, but if someone's gonna go on your property and shoot you and kill you, what's gonna happen when it's already dead? So we have a very big concern about how we're gonna be effective with this stuff. Half of the bills already gone through, you know, it's cross over in March 6th. So half of the bills, if you guys engage in legislative process, so sorry, your bills suck, they're dead. Our human trafficking bills are dead. We had 12 twos going through, so we have a hard time. They told me in the Capitol, I have to wait another year for them to introduce another bill to get what we want down in Waina. I'm not gonna wait another year for someone to come down, shoot us, kill us, rob us to get stuff done. And I want us to be more effective since Phillips with, working with Chris Murroka, we have Malia working in Samantha Court's office, we have City Council, and we should be working with our feds to get stuff done for us, but I know it's a donkey and elephant thing, as Johnny May said in Washington DC, because tariffs have just been processed. For Mexico and Canada, goods will go up. We import too much on gas, minerals, and other things in our food. And I'm starting a new party, because I don't like the donkeys, I don't like the elephants. Thank you very much, on March 6th.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Acosta, and my concern is about the the RISE organization that wants to build next door to our, my, my property. I'm head of the Rudrigs family. I know that there was a petition went around last year, more than 80% of the residents up in Makaha Valley is against it. I wanna know how come our voice didn't make no difference? You know, I, my grandfather had that place from 1953. I'm 68 years old, raised my four children, my six grandchildren, I have five great-grandchildren, not including my siblings with their grandchildren and all the other family members we have there, but it's not, we're not gonna be safe. Not that we're not gonna feel safe, we are not going to be safe. Because you're bringing people in, first they said it was youth coming out of foster homes. That's the first thing we heard last year. Now, this is up to 25-year-old adults. We see them walking the streets by 7-Eleven and Makaha, used to be Cornet Store, all of that, you see them walking around. My babies, my grandchildren, 14, nine years old, we drive by in the evening time, and they're like, the nine-year-old, he's like, Grandma, there's zombies over there, how come? You know, these people, ah, yeah, I feel sorry because the drug problem is bad, but I need to worry about my family, my kids. You know, are we gonna be safe when we're outside doing our get-togethers, playing volleyball, whatever it is, and we gotta worry about these people coming from that side of the fence? Our kids cannot walk down from my mom's house to the back to my house, they're not gonna be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Okay, so anyway, all of that, another thing why it's not safe, there's no lights, nothing on the street. How we gonna be safe? We're far away from the police station if we gotta call somebody.
That is true, Mr. Costa. I thank you. Next community member, appreciate that.
Aloha, Board, Blessings Star Delacruz. My concern is also as well with other community members against the RISE. I am a parent that has someone in there. You guys are not following the protocol and procedures of the federal law in regulation in housing these young adults. One of them is mines, and I'm here to say if you're not following the protocol procedures, the case manager's not even contacting me. They're having it spin around in the judiciary system. And I gave my Juliana to say, that person has a home with me. I'm the parent. That's the laws that you guys, they're following their own because they're privately funded or that are granted under that? No, I take responsibility of my Juliana, my Ohana. If he goes out there somewhere, I wanna be in court. I wanna be there.
Thank you, blessings. Next, next community member.
Hello, I'm Austin Salcedo. Yes, we do have a situation with RISE up in Nohuleo Road. Government Emergency Proclamation talks about 96792, not only Nohuleo, but 96792. Anything that RISE puts out, the 96792, we have to, have to approve that because of the Governor's Emergency Proclamation. They identify one area, Nanakuli, Miley, it's approved by the Governor's Emergency Proclamation. That's in writing. Also, it is, like Blessings said, a violation of the federal rule. It was made by the State Attorney General Holly Shikaki, Shikara of February 10, 2022. I'll quote the area, "An administrative rule to add a geographic spacing between, spacing requirement of one dash half mile between a clean and sober home on a registry and in elementary or secondary school will be likely violate the FHAA, Federal Housing Authority, administrative, administration." Okay? So that's the spacing, that's the federal rule, so it's double standards. So the state gonna violate federal? Who supersedes what? I think the federal supersedes a state ruling on this. So the Government Emergency Proclamation is out of alignment, and also Jun Yang is now in, in position of that, of that, the director's position. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salcedo. Next community member.
How's it? Peter Mulder from Makaha. Now, I just wanna echo everything Austin Salcedo just said. I can't believe this thing's still moving forward. It just seems crazy how we gotta work so hard and pay taxes and pay taxes on our places, on and on, and taxes to live in a safe place. And these guys are getting these free grants to, to do these things and to make our neighborhoods unsafe, and this is, Nohuleo Road is dark at night, and it's not, it's a perfect place for make trouble. Aloha.
Peter, let's go online. Let's see here, we have Nani?
Hello, Michael Co, Nani Peterson, resident of the Moku of Waianae. Big concern with Kaala Farms and Houma Okeola, actually wanting to know what the relationship is, and I'm hoping that the board can help to bring them up in, in front of the community to discuss their relationship and their movement and their vision forward on both sides. There has not been any, any cultural rehabilitation that I've seen that Houma Okeola is supposed to be moving forward with, with Kaala. And so wanting to know where you guys, how you guys can help to bring both of the organizations in front of the community to discuss what their vision, what their plans are, and what their relationship is. Mahalo.
Nani? We have one more online, Kevin.
Hello, this is Kevin, my client back, Nohuleo Road. Yeah, I just wanted to, the emergency proclamation made by the government that bypasses the, the requirement for a conditional use permit, which is the vehicle that the community uses to comment on the RISE project on Nohuleo. So that requirement for community input has been bypassed by the emergency proclamation. And I'd like to direct a question at, if Representative Congresswoman Chokuda has a rep here tonight, I'd like to direct a question at, at them if they're present.
Eric, it's not their time, Mr.
Okay, I'll wait for them, I'll wait for them to come on then. And then, Mr. Gannabon, did you get the letter I sent out a couple days ago, the email?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nobody else online? Go ahead, in community.
Hi, my name is Ken Suiso. I'm also expressing some, like my other neighbors in Nohuleo. We don't want that RISE development there. I mean, they're showing that they're not good neighbors now. The property now has an abandoned house, and it's not, the property is not maintained. They need to be cited tomorrow because they got a fire hazard on that property. They need to be cited tomorrow. We're gonna have another line. If you look at Ariel, that's the worst damn lot in all of Makaha. Shows me they're not a good neighbor. Secondly, you know, I have some doubt, their, their funding, when I looked, 74% of it is federal funding, 13% is state funding, 2% is county funding. Meanwhile, at the last presentation, they bought that property from an anonymous donor for $825,000. We jacked up the assessments for all the Nohuleo people. Thank you, RISE. Yeah, so you're screwing over the neighbors by paying these inflated rates, and then when I looked at their tax returns, they don't match. They don't yet, I don't see where they got that money. I don't know, maybe, I'm not a CPA, but it's funny. It really needs to be investigated. That whole thing. Finally, if you, if you paying attention to politics now, their funding is gonna dry up. I almost guarantee it. They're gonna cease to be able to operate. You approve something, but someone's gonna need federal funding, which is probably gonna get yanked. And then when I look, their efficiency, over half of their monies they get go to salaries. They're not helping. It's, you know, it's the homeless industrial complex. They get grants, they, they, they get the grants, they pay all their people, they stuff pockets of, who knows? You know, who knows?
Thank you, Mr. Suiso. Appreciate your time. Next, remember. Next, remember.
Aloha, Kalei Salcedo. Before I start my, I'd like to address something to the board, I have a question to the board. The committee meeting we just had at Mr. Endos Church, RISE was there, okay? The thing is, the board members all know what we, our concerns were and everything, but yet, RISE brought up their papers. Jojo Ida was there, brought up the paper. And she gave them some in points in how to go and get more help to build the structure. The thing is, we brought our issues to the board. Don't play the cat and mouse game because it's affecting us. You folks are board members, number one priority is the safety of your community. The voice, you folks supposed to be the voice for us.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Kalei.
But I'm my own voice, so don't play dog and pony.
Ms. Ms. Kalei, thank you. Okay? Next community member. Yes, okay, yes, go do your business now, please, before Raquel does.
Okay, thank you. Now, my concern is this is money, disgusting, money-driven. It's gonna cause more hardship, more heartache within our community. We do not want, we do not need the edding and the bedding. Enough is enough. We hold too much from the whole island and other island. Stop the edding and the bedding. It's a broken system, twenty-plus years, they're always gonna be a problem because they worry about their back pocket and not the community.
Thank you, Ms. Salcedo. Go ahead, Raquel.
Aloha, Raquel Rocky, um, I'm also a resident of Noholeo and I would like to echo my, um, neighbors in the sentiment that they are experiencing because essentially RISE is coming into our home with their shoes on and telling us now what to do and how to live our lives, even though we are there, they're coming to us and asking us, how can they be good neighbors, and we're asking, saying, thank you, but no thank you? They need to be able to respect that. Because if they're forcing themselves upon us, that feels really rapey. Okay, so, yeah, we just, um, would like to see, um, the communication reflect our feelings, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other community concerns?
Aloha, Malia Augustine, Chair for the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board. I'm here in person to invite the board members for Waianae Coast Neighborhood Board to a training next week, Tuesday, March eleventh, at seven PM at the Nanakuli Public Library. Uh, this is for board members only, so for the nine of you uh, to come and just learn about Robert's Rule of Law, ask questions directly to the Neighborhood Commission Office so that our boards can operate and function fluidly and, um, that way, especially uh, Board Member Dana, we have new board members fluctuating in and out, um, to be able to have everyone understand the process for the board. So please make yourselves available, March eleventh, seven PM at Nanakuli Public Library. Mahalo.
Any other, uh, concerns, go ahead, Mikey.
Hi, aloha, Michael William Capolino Eli. Um, yeah. Somebody took the bribe. What I'm saying, it'll be long drilling. It'll be long drilling, they're supposed to come to this board first, not go over there because that's private, and it is drill. Chang, ah, I stand. Chiming up everything too. But the state is fraud anyway, they're assessing to the crime. Whoever work for the state, because I have conflict of interest with the state even though I pay taxes. Conflict of interest because we is part of the kingdom. Um, this Kahala stuff. They said, they said, uh, costs of fifty-four thousand one kit. They're gonna be able to like, well, Kahala, Kahala room. I don't know, you just gave me the paper, I just show you about the building. And I never see all this planning. This is Eric, you know, set up at his finest, and how come the fire department wasn't inform about the fire mitigation? You know what I mean, you just shouldn't ask them.
Questions?
Yeah, the questions, how come they're not involved? If they, they, they end with a fire break. So that money was all miss spending, misuse of spending. Somebody took the bribe about the envelope that we can see. Because you can trace them. The envelope, you cannot trace nothing. It's only cash. Um, okay, um, the water supply, they still gotta go fix the road, but I would go talk to her, but I tried to talk to her on the lunchtime, I cannot, because they eating lunch at, I taking lunch at eleven-thirty. So, so the water gotta come on at the second water tank because we no more water up there. Okay, we stay walking up there, we no more water.
I had that discussion with her and she said it was already turned on. She had the work order for Tank One. That's the only one that's not working right now.
Oh, Tank One is the first one, the second one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, what's it called, we'll, we'll get that going. So it is, it is in the process, thank you.
And then the, the maintenance road on the other side, people getting hurt, whatever, I think it's a big river. I think it's like cliffy, slippery.
Understand that, and that's something that the both programs are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They call them the Jeep road, maintenance road.
And if you look to the EIS, it talks about that, of them repairing that, so it's in there. So now it's on the talks with them, how they're gonna work together. So that is, right now, they both know. And I addressed that this morning, Momi confirmed, let them work to it.
Yeah, now I'll talk to her anyway.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Get, get tomorrow, get tomorrow, get people camping, get people camping. At Makah parking, they never get rid of them yet, they stay there.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Sorry, Blessings Star, Dela Cruz, I just wanted to bring up on the RISE project. For seven years, I was looking for my son. When I finally found him, he's in this program. When I seen him, he's a drug addict, alcohol, sex, all that. And that's why I'm pushing it to see that I'm available to help my son. With all these protocol procedures that's in place, they not even following them themselves. But we have Ohana that's out there and we're supposed to enforce Ohana to help, but they haven't reached out. So what's the problem? I'm gonna allow them to continue doing that to my child, to my family member, or anything like that? Because I don't know what he gonna do out there afterwards, at night, or anybody else. He might hurt these guys that I stayed fighting for and helping with them live to peacefully here. That's why I'm speaking up. I love my son, but when he's in that program, it's a mess, all that. And I, I like stop the circle around, merry-go-round. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blessing. Um, Momi?
Aloha, Chair, Governor, Governor, Governor Tana and, um, the board. Thank you for the time. So I did get your email regarding HQ and I'm bringing it up, HQ and Kahala Farm issue. And, um, thank you for that, you were spot on as far as dividing deal on our lease and our master plan that we signed back in twenty-fourteen. My response to you was mahalo, Chair Gannabon and Representative Ma'ora Oka because it's part of the, the meetings. And let me just clarify that in October, we met and we resolved the many needed problem, the many, the many needed problem, which was part of Michael E. guys, um, you know, he's, um, bringing it up. So we, we resolved that, and he was there at the meeting as well. So again, your speech and my personal opinion addresses all the concerns, misunderstandings and legalities as regards to dealing our lease. Again, we, we have a deal on our lease for eleven-hundred acres, partnership with Kahala Farms, and we do have issues that are going on. Um, the EIS master plan was a brilliant idea in twenty-fourteen, eleven years ago, and bound the two entities that are common goal for our community and respect for cultural sites. As my Lahu is Hawaiian, I respect cultural sites, cultural things, I would eala. But there's some legalities and spaces that we also have to abide by. We're talking deal on our lease and we're talking about the master plan twenty-fourteen. However, the, however, from the executive director's perspective, which is mine, Echo Ma'kiola, the validity, validity of the EIS since twenty-fourteen should be considered because both parties failed the EIS master plan for non-performance of at most eighty percent due to, due to the partnership breakdown in communication and willingness to overcome conflict in Honolulu towards porno resolution. Things to consider on this master plan, separate from our deal on our lease. Contractual obligations, some agreements require periodic updates and reaffirmations, reaffirmations. So from twenty-fourteen to now, we never got together and talked about any of that. Okay, where were we? Are you Kahala? Where are we, HQ? A'ole, a'ole. Okay, mutual non-performance, abandoned by mutual consent during activity. So from twenty-fourteen to now, both of us were inactive and making this master plan come together. So consider those things when you're thinking about a master plan, separate from our deal on our lease. So mahalo for taking the time to review the issues at hand and arriving at a neutral assessment. Also, thank you for the invite, we're always appreciate, appreciative being able to add our voices to our community meetings that require us to self-check ourselves to be porno. Aloha.
Chair. Ma'am. Momi. Ken. Hello? Yeah.
I can hear you.
Could, could you please introduce yourself?
I said Momi, did I say Momi?
Okay, Momi, I've never met you. So who are you speaking for?
I'm speaking for myself, I'm a community member, my name is Momi Nelson, and I'm also the executive director of Ho'omau Ke'ola.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Anything else, any other questions?
So the suggestion that there has been no activity towards.
The master plan.
The master plan. Has there been reach-out emails?
Of course, I can provide you a mini tonight if you want. Um, Michael?
Sorry.
That conceptual plan, correct? That you never heard about, you never saw?
Momi, Momi, we're done, we're, yeah, I, I, I did, I did provide him with your emails.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Aloha, I'm Austin Salcedo again, just bringing, uh, uh, concerns about, uh, how RISE is operating. Not only they, they're not operating by themselves, they're also operating with other nonprofit organizations, Kahumana, and also a Partner in Development Foundation of Ulamana School at Kavailoa Youth and Family Wellness Center in Kailua itself. Partners in Development Foundation is, would also with RISE. So there's a magnitude of nonprofit organization that's operating. RISE in Kailua of August nineteenth of twenty-twenty-four had a sexual assault where a nineteen-year-old male walking client physically assaulted, sexual harassment, not harassment, rape, simply rape, a twenty-four-year-old female on the property. RISE, Carla Hauser stated at the housing committee, said, no, they not, she did not, this activity did not happen in the facility, but on the grounds. But not taking responsibility as a outcome of this, this type of behavior that's happening. So we cannot have that in Makah or Noholeo Road, no lights, no anything. So she's not gonna take the responsibility, so how the residents in the area gonna feel about not taking responsibility and being accountable for the actions of their clients? So opposition and protest against this RISE operations.
Thank you, sir. Um, I apologize, due to time limit, we have to end our community, um, stuff and then, uh, but we will end it with, uh, Mr. Vic, who is, he has an important announcement to make on his community behalf.
Aloha, board. Community, aloha, hi, Mo. Victor Flint, when I come to you tonight, not as Navy rep, but as a civilian, I'm retiring. I did my time. Second time, thirty-two years fire, fourteen years Navy. What a ride. I forwarded an email, you have that email with the new Navy point of contact and all that stuff. Also, um, a list of accomplishments that the Navy did along with the community and the other civic clubs, everything from the Waianae Coast Emergency Access Route, which will be a twenty-four-seven Barrington Highway bypass road pretty soon. Fully fully passed, being upgraded to where it can possibly handle mass leeward evacuation. We worked on flood mitigation out at Mickey Lua, that was kind of major. And, um, I don't know if the, maybe the old timers remember the windmill project on the ridge of the mountain. That went out the window, and Maka Kilo as well. And Nohool Kati. And, uh, Chris, I wanted to get you out there so you can get some eyes on. What a ride. I wish you all aloha and ahui hoka ko. See you guys in tomorrows. That's it.
Thanks, Uncle Vic. Okay, we are closing out our community section and moving on to our presentations. Uh, right now, we have, um, Roger Babcock from, uh, City to go over the, uh, from ENV. That's two agendas, and then are you gonna go over Stormwater too? Just the Stormwater, uh, just the sewage. This, where money, make money, do do clock money.
Okay, good, good evening, Chair, Gannabon and board members and community. Uh, thanks for having me here, I'm, I'm, my name's Roger Babcock and I'm with the Department of Environmental Services for the city. Uh, we, we take care of, uh, all the sanitation, right? So we take care of rubbish, collection, uh, disposal, H-power, landfill, that kind of stuff on the refuse side, and then on the wastewater side, we got the collection system. There's twenty-one hundred miles of pipes, there's, uh, seventy-one pump stations, including a few out here, and, and nine wastewater treatment plants, including the Waianae Treatment Plant. So that's what, uh, so that's what we take, what we take care of. Um, on the wastewater enterprise, takes about eight hundred people that work for the city to take care of wastewater. Another four hundred on the, on the refuse side to collect the residential waste, uh, and do all the processing. On the, on the wastewater side, um, it's important to note that those two services are paid for in different ways. So, uh, most city services are paid with your property tax. Uh, fire, all, you know, all the public safety, uh, parks, all the other services other than wastewater and drinking water. Uh, those are separate fees, right? And so we get a bill every month, those of you that are connected to the sewer. Uh, one for water and one for wastewater. And those fees need to cover everything it takes to, to run the program, which is operation and maintenance, that's mostly people. Uh, but it's also things that we have to buy, electricity and, and diesel fuel and, uh, chemicals and many other consumables. Um, and then it also pays for our, our, all the construction and upgrade and maintenance and repairs that we have to do to the, to the whole system. And Waianae Treatment Plant and Collection System does have, does have projects, uh, on the books, um, currently and, and planned for the future. So the sewer fee, as I mentioned, uh, is sort of self-staining, so we can't, we don't get property tax and the other services can't take money from the, from the sewer fee fund. Um, but the sewer fees haven't gone up since, um, June, uh, July first of, uh, twenty-sixteen. So it's almost nine years since the sewer fees have gone up. And as everybody knows, um, there has been some inflation and stuff during that time period, so, so costs have gone up. And we, uh, so we're at a point now where, uh, we do need to raise sewer fees again. So like I said, it had been, had been al- almost nine years, it'll be nine years this year. Um, before that, there was a period of about nine years where there was some very large sewer fee increases. And then before that, there was a period of about nine years where there were no sewer fee increases. So, um, unfortunately, we have this pattern where we go long periods of time with no, not even a small sewer fee increase, uh, to keep up with inflation, and then we need to have some larger fee increases. Um, we'd like to break that pattern, but that, that depends upon, um, the, the fortitude of, of city council being able to approve, um, the increases. But, so we did what's known as a sewer rate study. And we did this over a ten-year period to, uh, kind of extend it out and make sure that we can, uh, provide the services that we need to do to continue over this time period. And, um, that involves a, uh, determining our operation and maintenance cost needs, all of our construction project needs, um, island-wide, and then figuring out how much money we need to borrow. So construction projects are primarily funded by borrowing money. Uh, we, we buy bond, we sell bonds essentially, which is like a thirty-year mortgage. You have to pay it in principal and interest over, over thirty years. Um, and that's the way infrastructure is typically funded, especially long-life infrastructure like treatment plants and pipes and things which last like a hundred years. So you don't want to pay cash for them, you want to, uh, debt finance it and, and just pay the interest over time. Because the, then, then it's fair and the people who are benefiting from the infrastructure are paying for it over time, not just the people that are here now. Um, so as I mentioned, there's a lot of different kinds of, of projects, upgrades, modernization, replacement. We do have a lot of old infrastructure, and, um, so we need to, um, provide all of that. The, uh, so we have proposed sewer increases to the city council, uh, that was back in, um, November. We proposed sewer fee increases of nine percent per year. So each year goes up 9% over the next six years, and then it goes up 8%, 7%, 6%, and 5% to get out to 10 years. And so for an average person, average home, single-family home, it's about $100 a month right now. So in in a year, it will go up about $10 a month, you know, the first year, another 10 each year as you move out in through the years. So we do have sample bills for, you know, what what it would look like for each for any customer depending. Your water, your sewer bill does depends on how much water you use. So it's calculated based on a base charge, which is currently $77.55, and then it's per thousand gallons of water used. And so what we're going to do is increase those charges over the over the time period. And then that's to basically fund our fund our program and make sure we can continue to provide the service that we have and meet all of our obligations. And sorry, Chair, I just want to mention one thing that folks might have heard of, and that is the 2010 Consent Decree, which is a very large thing that lawsuit that was settled against the city. The city agreed to do a bunch of projects from 2010 through 2035. It's a 25-year program. We are about two-thirds done with that program. There's the rest, the last project to finish, which is the upgrade of the Sand Island Treatment Plant. It's a very expensive project because it's a big treatment plant, but that project needs to be finished over the next 10 years. And so it's in design now, and part of it is under construction. We're on schedule to meet all of it and avoid fines that will be imposed if it's not completed on time. And so that is a fairly large portion of the fee increase. And so with that, I did want to mention that we do have we're installing as part of the rate package, a customer assistance program. So the folks who who qualify, generally 80% of area median income or less, would qualify for a reduction in bill of $20 to $25 per month. Or depending on how much water you use, that would erase the increase for three to four years, depending on how much how much water you use for the for those of lower income that would qualify for that. And so we look forward to I look forward to, you know, answering any questions that you have. This in the there's a flyer that I handed out here. There's a few on the table. All that information and more is available on our website. So our website is honolulu.gov for all city agencies slash ENV for environmental services. And so you can find the flyer and all the sample bills and what you could expect. Looking at your own bill, what you would expect you to pay in the future with the fee increase.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock. We're going to board members online for questions. Let's go to Clay Wilber. And we go to Kahu, and then Johnny May.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Clay, we're here. You know, a big concern on your the way you guys are doing this per capita. You guys are talking about Sand Island Waste Treatment Center getting upgrades and so on and so forth. But there's a large wave, a huge difference in capita versus Y and I Treatment Center. You know, we we haven't we don't have we haven't built a lot more out here. And there's a lot of the the homes out here that is still on or can't be hooked up to a sewer system. So how is that fair that we are getting charged or increased the same amount as you guys developing other communities such as EVA and Honolulu, building all those high-rises? How is that fair to places like Kaihua and Y and I when we are so far away from that type of development? You know, I don't think that's fair that you guys are trying to do this across the board here and making us pay for everything else. It's the same thing with the rail, when you guys had everybody pay for this rail.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. So the question is, you think it's unfair? Right?
Do the numbers. It's unfair total.
Yeah, sure. So I appreciate the question. So the in in terms of fairness, the way the sewer fees work is everybody pays the same same base charge and same volumetric charge based on the water that you use. And so everybody receives the same service. So everybody essentially, that's the way that's kind of the way it works. Trying to charge different for different locations would run into legal challenges for sure. So sorry about that. Everybody pays the same.
Moving on to the next board member, Wahilani.
Hello, everybody. So I remember in November, when you when you folks went to present the the build hike with City Council. And then I remember our own City Council member, Andrea Tupolo, was asking before I asked you a question saying that, have you folks gone to the feds? You know, and I believe your answer was no. So did you folks, did you take, did you take heed of that monao and before, you know, getting a cost from us in Y and I? Oh, now you're saying over the board. Have you folks gone to ask the feds for, you know, to to help offset the cost?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that question. So we we get some federal funds every year for our for our program. It's in the form of essentially zero-interest loans that we get. So it's cheaper than all the other money that we use with bond funding. So we get about historically, we're getting about $50 to $55 million per year in federal funds. There are no other sort of like free money that we can that we can ask for, that we'd be eligible for with respect to federal funds. We have asked for relief from our consent decree settlement that was signed in 2017 or sorry, 2010, but the feds have said no.
I apologize, Roger. Due to time, Johnny May, please hear your question.
Um, thank you, Roger, for attending tonight.
Will you be at Amir's Nanakuli meeting on March 27 at 7:00 PM?
Yes, I think it's, yes, I will be there.
Okay. So you mentioned that we get about $55 million from the federal. Okay, you know, I'm sure the mayor and everybody else is monitoring the Oval Office. I think during this environment, we cannot rely on federal funding, and we need to pivot sooner than later for the shortfall. Unfortunately, property tax eventually gonna shoot, gonna go sky-high of to help the shortfall. So I don't think we need to get comfortable with federal funding anymore, unfortunately, in who's in the Oval Office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Board Member Perry. Board Member Dana.
So the question that I have is based upon you suggesting that the rate of inflation. So the rate of inflation at a federal level, do you know what the rate of inflation is for just the average person? Like, how much does the federal government or even state government project for the rate of inflation on a yearly basis?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I am not sure what what the federal, you know, projection is. I can tell you what we assumed in our in our rate study. We assume for the FY '26, you know, the first year, 4.5% or 4%, sorry. And then the next year, 3.5%. And then all the rest of the 10 years, it's 3% per year.
And then so the rate of increase is 9%. So even if you adjust for inflation, there's additional costs or different additional percentages for the in for the city. So I would like to know what the difference is.
Yeah, correct. So so for example, for the coming year, 4% of the 9% is inflation. The other 5% is the it's really essentially to kind of make up for not having any rate increases over the past eight years to fund existing debt that we've already issued and pay, you know, pay for the essentially the bonds that we already have and to pay for additional projects that are required. And in particular, there's that one big one, which is the Sand Island Project with the city committed to do in the in settling a bunch of lawsuits and and enforcement actions from the EPA back in leading up to 2010. One of them was the big sewer spill into Alawai Canal, if you remember. That resulted in a big enforcement and in the form of doing a bunch of projects to essentially replace and put duplicate pipelines there and where there was only one before and various other projects. Yeah.
Joe. Board Member Jordan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Babcock, for being here. And yes, I believe the federal government is correct. We should be held accountable for that consent decree because unfortunately, the city over these decades got us into that mess where it became sewage spilled onto land into the Alawai that caused us those problems, right? And here we are today, trying to amend those. And, you know, you didn't say how much Sand Island processes a day.
60 million gallons a day of the 100 total for the entire island.
And how much does Y and I wastewater treatment process a day?
I think Y and I is, is it three?
Three mil.
Could be three, yeah.
Correct. So my question to you, when we give some of that background, is same fee for all users? That's commercial users versus residential users, same fee?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So so the residential is the $77.55, and it's $4.63 per thousand gallons. For non-residential, so that would be all commercial hotels, businesses, restaurants, everybody else, they pay the same rates, but a determination is made based on their flow of how many homes it's equivalent to. So a given restaurant, if it's based on the flow that they buy from Border Water Supply, we calculate how many homes that's equivalent to. So it could be equivalent to 10 homes or 15 homes or 20 homes, or if it's a hotel, it's based on the number of rooms. So if there's 400 rooms, it's considered 400 houses. So they pay each month 400 times the $77.55 plus $4.63 for every thousand gallons that they use. So that's what I mean when they say that the rates are the same. All I'm on a shopping center is equivalent to like 8,000 homes. And so they pay a huge base fee plus every for every gallon.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Secondly, 10 million per year towards this program.
Correct.
And what I'm kind of reading and hearing from you is a $20 to $25 credit per month. Every six months, re-qualify, and that's to cover this increase. That's the credit they could potentially get.
Correct. So the credit is to assist those who, yeah, lower income who would qualify. And I mentioned the how it affect how it is related to the rate increase, which is depending on how much water you use, it could be as little as $2 a month if you use 2,000 gallons per month or $10 a month for the average user, et cetera. So it really depends on how much water you use and in terms of how value that how valuable that credit would be. And then we would reassess based on how many people sign, you know, who sign up for the program and become eligible, how much funding we need to provide. And just so you know, those fund, those credits or or customer assistance programs are funded by the whole, essentially by everybody else, right? And but that is, you know, that is a choice, you know, essentially a community choice that we want to help those that need help the most and that the rest of us presumably who can who can afford it better are essentially paying for that program.
Due to time, blessing, go ahead. And then Roger Babcock will be here to answer any questions on the on the side. Unfortunately, I can't hold the meeting to continue with this subject. Go ahead.
Blessing star, Dala Cruz, Kohavaipana diplomat minister. Thank you for your time. I just want to make a quick note. Border Water also gave a percentage for elderly or any low income. Cell phones also gave that in request for the federal funding and everything. And also housing, also creative programs. My question is, the sewers, you're saying $25, and I and at the federal level is not enough for the community here. $25 is not going to budge. We cannot even go to our grocery stores because our our food is so high, skyrocketed. So please, if you can lower the percent amount of your 9% of how much us community paying in our taxes, that would be nice. But also high higher up on a 25 because even my gas not going to be enough for 25 for go work in Honolulu. Thank you, because get lifeline, get other other people already get. Thank you.
You went to the side. Thanks, Roger. You can, Mr. Eli, you can speak with Roger in the back room. Unfortunately, we have to due to time, we have to close out and move on.
Yeah. Yeah, we can look into that, of course. Yeah. So I appreciate. Appreciate, yeah, appreciate appreciate the opportunity. And I'm available. There's the flyer there. Anybody who didn't get one, I have more. My contact information is there. You can contact me at the at the at the office. And we have, yeah, happy to answer more questions.
Thank you. Please work with Mr. Eli. He has some questions that he does want to ask you. Okay, moving on to our next presentation, please. We are looking at Lanihila Pacific Employment Assistance. Yes, sir.
And I'm Michaelo, a Chair Ghanabon, members of the White and I Neighborhood Board. I'm Ova'au Ka'asu MacArthur, no Lanihila Pacific, Ano'au Ma'au Wa'ani. I'm a Ka'asu MacArthur from Lanihila Pacific, also originally Wa'ani. Thank you for the board for giving me a short notice, on short notice, to give me some time to talk about our organization, how we're currently serving the community, but also a new program that we're launching to help our OPO out here in Wa'ani. Lanihila Pacific, we were founded in 1930s by Ms. Violet Cam, helping people recover from tuberculosis, getting back into the community. And so really, the the main purpose of our organization is in building independence for our anybody experiencing challenges. We do that in three major ways right now. First of, the first one is probably what we're most known for is our Meals and Wheels Program. We are the largest provider of meals and wheels on island. But I will remiss to not recognize our awesome network of volunteers who actually come out every every day to serve our kupun out here so they can stay home and have that food security addressed. We also have our social enterprises. We are nonprofit, so we do get grants to help fund our programs. But this our social enterprises helps us to kind of fund a lot of that so that grant funding go elsewhere in in the organization and other services. We're an Ability One program, which means 70% of the work hours that are performed within these services are performed by individuals with a disability. So it allows us to employ people with disabilities, give them opportunities whereas they might not have it on the outside. We do this with our Lanihila Kitchen. We have one kitchen out at our main office in Bachelot. We also have all that Hollyaina Dining Facility out in Hickam Air Force Base. We also have our Lanihila Grounds, which meets out at Kalailoa every morning. And then we also have our custom products, which also operates out of our Bachelot site. So I do a lot of great work with those guys. It's also a stepping stone, helps them get into a lot of their first jobs and hopefully build those skills so that they can get out into better employment opportunities. They also have our disability services, where she's where we come into play. And our department is employment services. So we work mainly with individuals with disabilities to get them the workforce training. So we do that in-house. We do group classes. We also do one-on-one trainings with our guys. And we've been fortunate over the last couple of years to formulate about 30-plus partnerships with businesses, organizations, so that they can go out to the community, get some paid internships, and hopefully get hired. A lot of our guys have actually gotten jobs through these paid internships. I think this past, I think two years ago was 21 placements. Last year was 34, and I think we're up to 35 this year. So coming out cold, but it's been really good for us. We also work with the schools, high schools, to work with workforce training. So that takes us to Kaihua High School, Kalahau, Leilehua, Farrington and Pearl City currently. We've done some minor work with Nanakuli, I think, a couple of years ago. And I think that's kind of why we're here tonight is I want to we kind of want to bring some of those services more to this side to service our OPO, especially on this side of Oahu. of Oahu. I know Kavaloa was brought up, PIDF was brought up. I actually go out to Olomana twice a week to work with our kids at HYCF, for youth correctional facilities. And that's actually where this program, and I'm going to talk about, kind of originates from. And the name of the program is Okeleloa, which translates to the expert steersman. The mole that that comes from is Kamehama comes down from, is sailing down to Ka'ou with his his paddlers. And as he hits open sea, a storm hits. But the mole also talks about the skill of his, his steersman, that he was so skilled that Kamehama did not get wet. This leads to Olelo No'ia, which talks about he ho'okele va'ano kala'ino, a steersman for the stormy day. And that's used to describe someone who is very courageous. So working with our youth coming out of our justice-involved youth out at HYCF, they face a lot of storms. They face a lot of things that I probably will never have to face, and I don't envy them for that. But the storms are going to come. Yeah, the storms are going to come, and the only way to address it is to become expert steersman. And so that's kind of where the exodus for this program comes from. We've, I help a lot of, I try to do my best to transition our kids out of prison into their communities. And I've done that through work, try to get them work internships, get them jobs. And what I found is that's not really the solution. Those guys, they just don't show up. And there's other problems, especially with their relationships when they come out. So the focus of this program is actually to address that first, address the different pelina with, that they have to manage when they come out here. We talk about fixing the na'au first, and then we can go into work. So part of this program is having that classes. They'll come out with me. It's a four-week program, two days a week. We'll get them to Vahipana, different Vahipana around the island, special places. I've been working with Camp Poliho for the last three years. We get them up there, get them on aina, get them to kind of take kuliana. Once they can get a sense of kuliana, sense of place, then we can start to change the habits, change the behaviors. So we just launched a program in January. So we just finished our first cohort two weeks ago, or actually last week. This broadens our horizon, whereas we were mainly working only with people with disabilities, this is in partnership with actually PIDF, so partners develop a foundation. This broadens our service area to not just individuals with disabilities, but opportunity youth, which is defined as youth anywhere from 14 to 24. And that's pretty much the only requirement. That, as long as they disconnect from school and work, we can work with them. So I'm just here introducing the program. If there is opportunities, any if you know of any youth that might fit this program, we'd love to have them come out and in one of our future cohorts.
I I have some questions from our board members. Right now, we're going to start with Tiana Wilbur and then board member Perry, and then we'll go to our rest of the board. Go ahead, board member Tiana.
Hello. For sake of time, I actually would just love to if somebody or if I could just pass along my information so we can connect more regarding the program and how we can get some of our youth in our community more involved with your program.
I can leave my information with the chair and then get it to you.
If you could disperse that, Chair, that would be wonderful.
That's great. I have his email. I'll forward it to you. Okay. Moving on to board member Perry.
Thank you, Chair. So when you said disability, are you saying physical disability or behavior or?
Could be. It's pretty broad. It's pretty broad. As long as, I think it's a diagnosis, so they would have to go to their doctor, get a diagnosis and then. And normally, that's how we would work with, but this particular program, it doesn't have that requirement. So it kind of is pretty broad.
So are you working with Waianae High School?
I could. We haven't pushed out here yet, but that's that's the push.
Wasn't that the point in coming to our community?
If you got a contact, we'll get we'll get in there.
You can you can call the high school.
Yes, I have the contact for Waianae High School.
And lastly, there's a lot of this kids go to diversion, so that could be a good area. And, okay, and then on the seat, the meals on wheels, at one time, Lanihila came to Waianae and deliver. Did you guys reinstitute that program?
Yeah.
But you guys put it on pause.
We should still, we should still be, I see our vans are driving around on this side.
Not to individual homes now, was at the park. You guys put it on pause after COVID.
I can ask, I can ask that department, but I know the individual homes are being delivered too.
Thank you. Okay, any board members, any community members would like to ask questions? Oh, Waialani?
Can you just have brothers, can you send me brothers information too? I'd like to cook a kuka with brother later on.
Will do. Thank you.
Blessings.
That flies in the back of your seat.
Okay, yes, he has information as well, these pamphlets as well, for those who are here. Okay, thank you, sir. I do appreciate your time. We are moving on to our next presentation. Harris Fuller, you made it on our our agenda here.
And everything is from the archives. So you guys Google Hawaii State Archives. And then go down to research records and photo collection. Guys with me. Then search and magnifying glass. And go to King David Kalakaua for the nation celebration or ceremony. And hit magnifying glass again. And you're going to get to the tree searches. So you go Hawaii, search Hawaii government, then magnifying glass again.
Mr. Fuller, can you please present your presentation regarding the flag? Is that what we have?
Yeah, yeah, because I'm trying to get to the fact.
Where it is, okay.
Because you guys not going to believe me if I have no facts. So then you go to harmonies. Sorry, sorry. Okay, this is the flag right here. This is not the Union Jack, yeah? This is Kanaloa. Jack that they say this jack, this is Kanaloa. This is the Star of Kamehama. Like what they're running. Flag that they're running. Is pirate flag. We got jacked for real and double cross and hijacked. So what you see right here is Kanaloa and the Star of Kamehama. The red is for the people gave up all their lives. So this is the blood. The white is for the people, the purity and God. Blue is for Kani. The red is for Ku. The white is for Lono. The blue is for Kanaloa. The red is for Pele and Iaka. And this is for her sisters right here. Oleahu, Wa'au, Lillinoi. Lillinoi is Haleakala. And O'Kani is Hualalai. And the bike, the Yekavai is off for the rain. And the last blue is this is this is the true flag, not the pirate flag. So, yeah. And what we're running right now is all fraud, dishoned fraud. That's the pirate flag, and people are walking blank for real because they are our land, my family's land, and they're just doing whatever they want to. And I get proof, I get documents. So everything is all on archives. And I need justice, not fraud. This is all fraud, fake, phony.
Well, I hope what you're showing is not fraud. I mean, you're just saying that, right? So thank you.
I should be guys on the archives.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, that is educational regarding the flags because we are only grew up with the other type of flag.
Yeah, so 132 years, so fraud.
So if, you know what I mean? I 38 years, okay? Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any questions from the from the board or community? Thank you, Mr. Fuller. I appreciate you coming out and doing, sharing that educational of the flag. Okay, if no questions in the community, no questions, we are moving on to our board Board business, we're moving to approval of Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 agenda.
Perry, make a motion to accept March 4th, 2025 agenda.
Thank you, Board Member Perry. Anyone the second motion? Dana, second motion. Any abst, any abstent?
Your accent's out of group, upper family.
Any knows? Okay. Minutes for March 4th, approval for Tuesday, March 4th agenda has been passed. Seven point two, report of board members attendance at any other meetings and declaration of conflict of interest regarding issues under board business. We can start with Tiana. Okay, she's not on. Okay, Waialani, any, any boards that you've been on? Kala'ei? Johnny May Perry?
Thank you, Chair. I attended February meeting, Board 36. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard I heard Waialani there. Waialani, are you there?
Yes, I didn't attend any.
Okay, Kala'ei Wilbur? Any boards? Nope. Okay, moving on, Dana. George Jordan?
No.
Okay, moving on. Okay, so we have done that on seven point two. We're moving on to the next agenda topic. It is elected officials, representatives, limited to two, three, two minutes each. Congresswoman Jio Takura's office. Jio Takura's office available. Governor Green's representative. It did, it did pass on his report. Okay, Senator Samantha Decourt?
Hi, good evening, Chair, board members. Senator Decourt here. We're right in the middle of legislative session, so we are preparing for crossover. It's a full week. We are voting on final bills, so there's a lot going on. One bill I do want to highlight is Senate Bill 438, that's going to make it over to the House. It does restrict landfills for being over aquifers, which we want to protect our water sources. However, it does also allow, it does also allow our current landfill to stay here in Waianae. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So lots going on. I'll just get right into questions if you guys have any any legislative issues that are taking place right now.
Any board member questions online? Johnny May Perry?
Thank you, Chair. Senators, to clarify, Waimea Nalu Gouch will remain open if this bill doesn't pass?
Yeah, right now, the city has identified a spot in Wahe'ua. However, there is a lot of controversy in that location. It is over an aquifer, and so right now, the state is issued a bill that would restrict any landfills to be over an aquifer and just for our factual, just for factual purposes, Waimea Nalu Gouch is also over a land, is also over an aquifer. Our whole island is over an aquifer. But this bill does restrict it from moving to that proposed location. And I know, I believe the mayor's rep is here, so maybe they can answer more questions. But if that site does not allow for the landfill, it will have to continue to stay here on the Waianae coast. So.
Okay, so I don't mind it being in Kapole because Waimea Nalu Gouch is Kapole zip code, not 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 Waianae zip code. And water, yes, water, brackish water, which nobody can drink because it's salty. So I'm okay where it remains because it's next to each power. It just makes more sense to continue to be, to remain there. And if you're going to go for federal funding more so, it needs to remain there in Kapole, right across Paulina. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Dana. Board member Dana?
So regards to the conversation earlier, which is was about rise in terms of the governor's proclamation and how that affects development within communities. It allows for exemptions. Any thoughts about this exemption process?
Yeah.
And how do you ease the tension within community when you have a larger entity allowing the exemptions? We had this happen before, and so just comments about?
Yeah, I I'm concerned just that, you know, I believe that rise could have, and we're all learning from this situation, but I believe that they could have done a better job with outreach efforts prior to them actually locating and identifying residential area for their project. I think that most of the questions and comments could have probably been mitigated or maybe not, but I think that if we were able to jump in front of it, we would have been able to have a better discussion. But right now, where it's at, it's obvious that the residents are in opposition of it. So that would be difficult.
Remember George Jordan?
Thank you, Senator, for being here. Um, I think my biggest concern is under Lingo's administration, she started off with the emergency proclamation in 2006 for homelessness. Last I heard, we're in 2025, and every governor since then were using emergency proclamations to address homeless. And every governor since then were using emergency proclamations to address homeless concerns. Now, we all understand the plight of what has been going on with our homeless individuals. But to abuse the power of emergency proclamations for the same scenario for almost 20 years. And for us to now have, we received five operational facilities under the 2006 emergency proclamation. We just got a new 100-bed kauhale. Where the former homeless coordinator, Mr. Mizuno, who has since quit and been given another soft landing in this current administration's job. I'll be nice, I'll be being real, right? He didn't even present what that was going to be to this community. And now this next project, again, addressing youth homelessness, is going to be put in our community because of an emergency proclamation. When is the legislature going to step up? We've had three homeless coordinators under this administration. I don't understand what direction we're going in. I really don't. And, and you're hearing the blight of what is going on.
Thank you, Board, Board Member George Jordan?
Yeah, and just to address your concerns, I mean, this has been a constant conversation that we've had with these emergency orders. And so the best thing that I can do is use my position of authority to stand behind the community and the community's efforts to either support or oppose it. But it's definitely no surprise to the governor's office or to the homeless coordinator's office, whether that be the former director or the current one, that I will stand behind the community. And it's clear that the opposition is there. And so that will be consistent with the position I take with, from the Senate office. So I'm behind you guys. I don't understand why projects, whether it be government or privately funded, I don't know why they don't come to the community first. I don't know if they think that, maybe if they just do it quiet enough that nobody's going to find out. But we're very hands-on here. And so I think that everybody really should probably take a lesson from this and, and just come to the table first. And if it's something the community wants, great. If it's not, then it's not. Maybe another community wants it. But I feel just the same as the rest of you here, where things are constantly shoved down our throats. And I'm continuing to sound the alarm anytime I see something trying to sneak into our office, I mean, sorry, into our community. And then, you know, so that's why I never have meetings in my office with new developments or projects. I always tell them to go to the neighborhood board, see how the community feels, and then there's your answer. So, yes.
Thank you, Senator. Can you members? Any members?
Aloha, kapo'chili, ko'akamai, no ka'inaho opulu'opulu'ka'ava'ava'wainai mai'a. You know, regarding the Wa'manalo landfill, that guy is supposed to be closed for over almost 20 years already. So there's been extension after extension. And so the city goes through this waste of money motions to look for other places. What they need to be doing is looking for other process. They need to use technology and stop wasting our time and wasting our money. Now, in the meantime, what are we getting out of it besides bad roads, additional traffic, and the same benefits that the rest of this island is getting? In the meantime, we suffer these, these ailments and these illnesses from PVT and from Wa'manalo Gouche. But what is the rest of this island doing for the 96792 community? So we consider it part of ours in YNI because once you pass Kahit Point, once you pass Eko, it says, welcome to the YNI coast. Right? So it's right there in that same vicinity. So that's why we consider it more of us because we see it on a daily basis. Kapolei, Ko'olina, they know of its existence, but they're not actually seeing it. They're not driving by it. They don't face the ills of it. So what we need to do is perhaps take a lawsuit as a community. Do a lawsuit against this city and county for continuing to put us in this position. You know, we need to actually take steps in our own hands and not depend upon this failed government, which is, did the fail rail, still wasting our money on ancient technology, which what we need, but we didn't need that technology. So that's what we need to do, community, you know, anybody that knows anybody or justice or somebody that can do this for us, Native Hawaiian legal corporation. Why are these ailments here where you have the most Native Hawaiians? And that would now include Kapolei because now we're fully on the West Side. So now that's why, I mean, I wouldn't want to impose this on any of my neighbors that don't want it, just like us. We don't want it. Why do we want to impose it on anybody else? Saying that Na'ua'wa was a solution, it's not a solution. That was so ridiculous, totally ridiculous. But they're going to go through the motions and we need to stop them from going through these motions and get real solutions, which is technology.
All right, due to, due to time, I only have one more for community and then Governor Green's rep is on and then I'll come to Representative Maroka. I apologize.
No, this is perfect. I'm waiting for him, actually. Sam, you know, you did great today on the floor representing the West Side and opposing all the landfills and everything. You stood up for the West Side, proud of you. And you, you both just took office in January of 2025. All these entities that we discussed about rise and all that kind of stuff happened before you took office. Chris Maroka as well, too. So you guys are going to have a challenge in cleaning up the act of all this bad behavior that's been happening. So I'm going to address my concern next one to the governor's rep. It's important. Thank you.
All right, Governor's rep, we're going to come, go to Rep Maroka first and then we'll come back to you, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Rep Maroka, please.
Hello, Board, good evening, Board members, community. So, you know, I just want to echo what our senator said because on the House side, we fought that same battle today on the landfills. I, I stood up, I said my speech, said how much we don't want it, you know, echoing the community. We don't want it, we don't need it. We got the only two live, open landfills on our side. So that's, that's, we're fighting that, it's coming over. Just submit your guys' testimony because something happened today in the House that just proves that you guys are hurt. The community is hurt. We did kill Bill 1118, which was the forced vaccinations bill. That bill died in the House today. Okay, so submit testimony. There are good things. And, and you know, I, I hear the complaints. I hear it. And, you know, anybody who knows me in the building will, will understand this. And I say this loud, proud, and clear to everybody, that Capitol lacks integrity. There's a lot of people in that building that lack integrity. I'm seeing it firsthand and I'm calling it out. You can ask anybody who knows me. I hold no words. I do not hold that. So we got a couple of things, but in, in respect of the time, I know we got the governance. When it comes to rise, I have my office manager sitting here. I gave her directions. We want, we want to get the governor's rep in our office tomorrow or I'll go to theirs. Because there's a few things about rise that I can tell you. I objected to it as a rep when Rice sat in my office. I talked to the director to her face. I objected, we don't want it. The neighborhood board objected it. Our council member objected it and our community objected it. The problem with people like Rise and a lot of other people are they're coming into our community and whether we want to believe it or not, we got people in our community who think they speak for the community. And that's where the information is getting leaked out. And that's when we, we hit these problems, they can say, but we spoke to so and so, we spoke to so and so. We got to stop that. The only way we're going to win is be one. Okay? We, we daily weigh one stuff and I'm going to use two pillars of our community, Ka'ala and Homa'oke'ola. I've been very active with trying to get these two pillars of our community to get along. And like I told Homa'oke'ola and Ka'ala, if our kupuna no can get along, we no can get along. It starts at the top, respect, malama, get along, and then we can get on. So with that, I'm going to end, but I do want to invite everybody here because of the neighborhood board and their one minute time. And everybody has concerns that we want to address. I have created through my office and out of my own personal pocket, First Fridays. This week Friday is our first Friday. It's going to be an every month thing, the first Friday of every month, we're going to have meetings. Everybody is welcome. This month is at Lilly Coy Lounge up at Macaw Valley Country Club from seven to nine. The reason for those is so we can have these talks more time, more freely. Be respectful when you come, be respectful of yourself, of each other, and let's try and figure out solutions and not arguments. Okay? On this first, on this first visit, we do have border water supply coming out and they have a water management plan they want to discuss. And we're going to go over a couple of bills that we're working on. And once that's done, it's open to the community. And we want to hear the issues. We want to, so we can unite and we can fight. Okay? Listen, we can unite and then fight because right now we fight in each other. It's community fighting each other and separated, we no can get along, we no can get nowhere. Another thing, yes, thank you. So there's a lot of people in our community that cannot make it to the Capitol for whatever reason. You want information, you want to give testimony, you want to go on Zoom, you want to do any of that. Again, another thing I did out of my own pocket is I have a wine eye office right here in wine eye above Tasty Freeze. It's an extension of the Capitol office. It's manned Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and you guys feel free to come by. Anything that you want to talk to me about in the Capitol, you guys can do it right here in wine eye. And I, I just understand that we fighting one battle out here. We cannot take time off of work for come to the Capitol, for sit around all day, for give a two-minute testimony. So I, that's all I got.
Board Mayor, Board Member Perry?
Thank you, Chair. Rep Maroka, did you read Project 2025? If so, can you send me a PDF about it? I hear about it, but I seem to cannot get access to Project 2025. That's number one. And number two, you mentioned in the West Side stories that you're working on 16 bills. Can you provide me the House bill numbers for all 16 bills? Thank you.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Perry, it's 19 bills. I can give you all the bills. I will provide that information on Friday. At First Friday, I can tell you that of all the bills we introduced, only two are still alive. Only two are still there. But we did introduce 19 and I will have all of those bills numbers for you readily available on Friday. Secondly, Project 2025, I don't know. I've only, just like you, I've only heard about it. I haven't even wasted my time looking into it. I'm working on community concerns before I work on broader ones.
Okay, thank you. Can you give me the two House bill number that is still alive?
House Bill 295 and House Bill 486.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members?
So I have two questions. The first question again is in regards to rise. So the understanding is having a home site in YNI is a problem? Or is it the program itself a problem? That's the first question. No, he
So, so the problem is the, the type of business and where it's located. You know, we don't want to introduce troubled youth. And I, I just want everybody to know that when Rice sat in front of me, one of the biggest things that I was opposed to, and is she online? Because I want her to correct me, I want, I want her to correct me if I'm wrong at any point. So when I met with her, the problem that I, I see is when they use the word troubled youth, they're using the word youth out of the HUD program, which youth can go up to 24. However, they're focusing on 18-year-olds. Why? This is what caught me. They're focusing on the 18-year-olds because the 18-year-olds can sign the leases. So my problem with the, with Rise, and I, I, like I told her, it isn't the prob, it isn't the program. I support getting better, helping everybody. It's a problem of introducing outside trouble into a residential community that has no sidewalks, has no lights, has no, i- i- it's an underdeveloped area.
So it's the residential community component of Rise?
Correct.
Number two is in regards to, you brought up that you've been having a lot of conversations with Homa'oke'ola and Ka'ala. And can you identify three issues between those conversations that should be public knowledge to the community?
I, I, I won't do that. I, I won't do that. I can, but out of respect to two entities, and Dana, you, you understand because I was there. I, I hold no, I hold no stake in any of that. I'm just trying to be the, the neutral ground to get the two pillar, to get the two entities to come together. Because there is an agreement that has fallen apart. It, it, there, there is some violations, there is some arguments, and there's attempting litigation. So I, I, my, my stance on this is I'm trying to get the two entities to get along before ultimately that lease gets yanked and all of YNI loses. I'm trying to save YNI from being the loser.
So in under, the statement that was made that no conversations are being made between the two organizations, is that a real valid statement? Or is that something that's misunderstood?
Oh, when, when was the comment made?
It was made this evening. The con
Okay, no, there, there is conversation between the two, the two meetings that I, I personally held. I brought the two entities together. So at these two, at these two meetings, I can vouch, there was talk. What happens outside of the meetings, I cannot, I cannot vouch for.
Okay, thank you.
Any community members? Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to say, comment is that when somebody wants to do something in our community, whether we like it or not, even as a community, we say no. They're going to find somebody that says yes. It's by intent and design that these entities, organizations go to specific people. So maybe what we need to do is we need to share who our bobblehead people are. And not to say that they don't have their own Leo, it's just that we need to say, who are these people? Just put the light on it so that we can all thank them or not. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other community members?
Yes. Pikachu, Shelby billionaire, for all of you guys watching on Zoom, watching on a little TV, wherever you are, I want to thank this guy, our official rep, Chris Maroka. We did try writing a bill, 483, for human trafficking. I asked for a black budget to deal with the human trafficking, drug smugglers, cartels. It did not go through. It got killed with all the other bills. But because I engage a lot with Philip Ganaban, who's your staff guy, I actually called him first before I call him because usually he's not available, he's in a meeting. So I would like to help you guys help engage with us. So I noticed on Curvavella's Facebook, if you guys can put the infographics of the bills you guys support or oppose, like on Instagram, Facebook, have your staff members do it. You don't got to do it. Like Gary does a great job. You just have your staff members do it for you. Support these bills, you know, one through seven, like Johnny May says, oppose these, and that'll be a lot easier for us. So if you guys are on Zoom, if you want to Zoom, you're going to learn the hard way like I did, the portagee. I pushed the button, thought I could just jump in. You're not allowed to. You have to testify 24 hours in advance. So if you got bill X, Y, and Z, you have to send it, if it's like at 2:00 PM, you have to send it 2:00 PM the day before. The problem we're beginning is that some people come home after work, they get the email from the notifications, but by the time you get it, 10 o'clock, it's already too late. So if we have a better communication with Samantha, Chris, Andrea, and everyone inclusive, it'll be helpful for all of us to help you guys. Because I don't have to wait next year to reintroduce another bill on Capitol Hill. That seems kind of moot. And I like your children, your community concerns and hope to see you guys all on the seventh.
And I just wanted to say, what he, what he's saying is correct. And so with the testimony, email me. Along with First Fridays, with the wine eye office, I don't think there's a person that sent me an email saying vote no on this, vote no on that. I respond to every single email. That's just, it's a promise I made during campaign that I'm going to be responsive, I'm going to be available. So I respond to every single email, even if it's like 11 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning. I do say, I think last night if I get my phone, there was a bunch. So I do respond, just reach out.
Go ahead and introduce yourselves. Come to the mic, introduce yourself, please. Okay, and this will be our last because I have to move on to the governor's rep.
Thank you. My name is Blanca Larson, but I just wanted to thank you for being over here and for working so hard for the community and congratulations. And I just wanted to ask you, I, I heard that you passed a bill. You introduced a bill and it was passed, it was accepted. You, you did not introduce, you didn't make it, sorry about and about testifying, if you want to testify and you cannot make the deadline, you can go and testify in person.
And just to cap off what Blanca said, you can testify in person right here in wine eye. Come to the office, we'll, we'll put you on Zoom, you guys can testify right here. We can't, we cannot afford to take We can't, we, we cannot afford to take days off, I understand that. That's why we did that office.
Rep, can you tell them where your office is again in Wainai?
Uh, it's a very, very hard place to find, so you're going to have to look for this really good place called Tasty Freeze. Oh, it's right upstairs.
Right upstairs.
Above the meat market. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Tasty Freeze is for us old buggers, yeah?
Tasty's.
A different name now.
Tasty's, yeah.
It's nine to three, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Thank you, Rep. I appreciate that. Okay, we're going to close up, and we're going to head over to Governor's Rep now.
Aloha, yes, apologies for the technical difficulties in the beginning. My name is Diamond Badajos. I'm the Public Information Officer for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands here on behalf of Governor Green's office. Um, I did send out, like you had mentioned, the monthly e-newsletter. So if anyone didn't receive it, um, please get your email address over to me and I can send that your way. Um, otherwise, no follow-ups, um, on the Governor's side. But I did want to make an announcement that on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands will be hosting a rally at the state Capitol. It is called Kuhio Kako, and it will be a unity rally, unity rally, um, for the department, uh, our beneficiaries and other Native Hawaiian organizations. So we do encourage, um, the Wainai community to come out and support that. And with that, I can take any questions or concerns for the department or, uh, anything general for the Governor or the state. Mahalo.
Board member Perry?
Uh, thank you Chair. Okay, uh, March twenty-fifth, at what time?
Oh, apologies. So it will be, uh, between nine AM and noon.
With what's going.
And it'll be at the Rotunda.
Okay, got it. With what's going on in the Oval Office, our community is vulnerable, have lots of, um, nonprofit, have, I think, high number of Medicaid recipients, Medicare recipients. Um, Social Security have been accused as a Ponzi scheme. I want the Governor to attend our next meeting to explain to us what's happening at the Oval Office and how it's going to impact, uh, impact Wainai and the state of Hawaii. Because now they're attacking the Department of Education. And as you know, or you should know, that over thousands of federal workers were fired. And I thank the Governor for being proactive in offering state jobs and the city offering city jobs. But we need to have a better understanding of what the Oval Office is doing and the impact on our grocery bills and so forth. Thank you for your time.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Okay, community?
Hello, I'm Austin Salcedo. I'd like to bring the attention, as far as to the Governor. Uh, bring, uh, our Governor's Rep, bring attention to, uh, Jun Yang to come before our elected Senator Decore and House Representative, uh, Maroka. Reason for it is, under the interpretation, my interpretation, Obama, nobody. That's why I'm going to hand these documents over to our representative for our district. Uh, it's a, it's like, uh, Attorney General's interpretation of how the West Side has been discriminated of not providing us a public meeting requirements to county zoning ordinance. Allowing for our John Mizuno in February second, twenty twenty-four, to come before the Governor's Emergency Proclamation and shoving it down our throats of, uh, uh, RISE operations in Makah on Nohule Road. The carriage is before the horse. We're supposed to do a public meeting requirement on this thing. But we've not denied it. What we did was, was a Governor's Emergency Proclamation presented to us without this requirement first. So I'll present these documents to them. It's a violation of the FHAA, uh, FHAA Federal Fair Housing Authority. So with that said, I, I insist a meeting to be done. Because we on the West Side has been discriminated and not, and not provided opportunity for fair, uh, meeting under this, uh, this guidelines, okay? So I'm not, I'm nobody, I'm not a legal assets, but this interpretation is done. It was made by the Attorney General of the, of Hawaii. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to back online real quick. Nani? Go ahead, Nani.
Mahalo, aloha Diamond. Um, mahalo for being here. Um, so back, eh, when FestPac happened, I was arrested for, um, having my Hawaiian Kingdom plates. And the Governor was a part of, um, my removal from, uh, the cell. Um, in that he called the Chief of Police, the Chief of Police called the station, and the station moved me out. Um, I've been trying to get in contact with him to discuss, discuss the matter. Um, because I, like many of our community members, that understand where we are in the Kingdom still existing, um, have been harassed continuously. And I'm done with that. I've gone through the process and requested in a, a meeting with him. And this was back in January, um, at opening leg, no, I'm sorry, this was back during FestPac. At opening legislation, I went to his office to, um, speak with him, but he wasn't available. I left the message to, again, uh, ask for a meeting. I just received an email from the office in regards to the fact that he's too busy. I understand he's busy, but I'm not going to take that, and I would like to have a meeting with the Governor. Um, and in that also, I was wondering if you can address the situation with the AG and the response that was supposed to have been given, um, back when the, uh, former Acting Senator, um, Crab had presented the, the letter to the AG. Uh, so I'd like a response to that.
Okay, I can certainly report back on that with our next meeting.
Mahalo. My email is olalohola@gmail.com.
Thank you, Nani.
Mahalo Diamond.
Okay, um, go back to the community and then Kevin. Okay, go Kevin first, Kevin.
Yeah, hello, um, this is Kevin McClintock. Um, I sent an email to, pardon me.
Aloha.
Hi, that's an email to the Governor, just the same issue, the RISE issue that Mr. Salcedo was there about. So the emergency proclamation was signed by John Mizuno, twenty-four October, twenty twenty-four. And that drove the, um, uh, canceling out of the, uh, what's called the conditional use permit requirement, which gives a community input to that project. And that furthermore cancels out the certificate of need requirement, which also gives community input to the project on Nohule Road. So my concern is, uh, the vehicles for the community input for that project have been removed by the emergency proclamation, which John Mizuno signed. So, uh, I would just like to resolve that somehow. Uh, there's plenty of community input to be, uh, to be solicited, and we'd like to get that in somewhere on the record, so. And I sent an email to the Governor. I don't know if he answers emails or not, but, uh, uh, just a couple of days ago. I know he's, didn't have time to answer every one, but, uh, anyways, that's, it's all explained in my email. You need my last name to look up the email, or?
I'm sure. I'll take your last name if you want to.
Okay, yeah, it's McClintock. Yeah, McClintock, M-C-C-L-I-N-G-O-C-K.
Got it, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Kalei.
Uh-huh, Kalei Salcedo. Uh, um, you know, I have a question for the Governor. His number one priority as Governor for Hawaii'i, Ano Lulu, okay? Is supposed to be safety precaution, safety, a community concern, safety. We haven't seen any safety precaution within our West Side, nine six seven nine two. All we've seen is compromising, okay? He nominated John Mizuno. He turned around, used and abused it, and Manao off the Puna's, using the word Akahali. And your folks' office talked the word and turned around, talking to the state Capitol and said, let's be the Kahali for the people. Do not use those words unless you know your inner spirit. You do it for the right thing. You do not do it and be deceiving. It's disgusting. It's all about money.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Salcedo.
Personal gains. Stop it. Shame on you guys.
We've got one more, last community member, and we got to move on to our next.
Aloha, Kapua Kilikua Kamai. Aloha Diamond. Uh, I'd just like you to convey to the Governor that there are many of us that do not appreciate him trying to circumvent the process, which is what he's doing, has been mentioned earlier. But what I'm referring to is GM five eight-three. And, um, this is nominating his appointment of Hinano Rodriguez to the Hawaii Water Resource Management. Um, and he is intentionally playing politics with that seaworm. But it's not supposed to be full of politics. It's supposed to be for the people, for the protection of the people, especially with that Loaia seat. And I know that you understand and you know what the Loaia is. And this is an expert in this particular board. They're supposed to have one person that represents the Hawaiian culture and understands it and the value of water to all of us. Now, when the Governor lost his people that he wanted to put in there, or he recognized that they wouldn't be confirmed, he held it in advance. There were two people that were still out of four that applied, two people that still stood up to it. And these two Wahine are wonderful cultural knowledgeable Loaia. They should have the right and the privilege to serve us because they are rising up to the occasion. So his consistent, constant circumvention of the process by creating a second nominating board and having one of the people that was already found to be, um, favorable to development, to help pursue his home development and all of these waivers due to the proclamation. We want to build homes too. We want to take care of our people, but let us do it the Pono way. So it is not appreciated. So I suggest and I urge everyone to oppose GM five eight-three Kamai. Five eight-three, Mr. Hinano Rodriguez from that position. And I'm not speaking ill of him. He is a cultural practitioner, but he doesn't specialize in water management. Whereas the other two Wahine, Lori Buchanan of Maui and Osa Tehana Springer, they are well knowledgeable. They have been in his arenas for decades. So ask him, tell him that Kapua from Wainai wants him to cease and desist from his politicking on these boards that's supposed to represent the people, especially that one seat. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Diamond. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha.
Aloha. Okay, we're moving on to our next section. Um, Mayor's, uh, Representative Donna Puna, are you on tonight, Don?
I am. Hello. Thank you. So, um, a couple of issues. Last time, there was, um, a question about are there any future development plans on Mount Ka'ala similar to North Shore? Uh, the Vice Chair for North Shore Neighborhood Board had shared concerns with a developer who received a conditional use permit for a ski lift gondola and a zip line. Um, which is on the opposite side of the mountain. She wanted to let, uh, Wainai residents know. So DPP is not aware of any efforts, nor has it received any plans or permit applications to do a similar project on the Wainai side of Mount Ka'ala. It should be noted that much of the upper slopes of the valleys on the Wainai side are in state and federal ownership. Regarding the, uh, Kamana Nui Agri Business Project that, um, the Vice Chair of North Shore Neighborhood Board, um, spoke about, no building permits for the gondola or zip lines can be approved or issued until they satisfactorily establish active agriculture on fifty percent of the, uh, land area. And then the second issue was the Wainai Valley Development. What is the purpose of the project being done near Angel's Junkyard in Wainai Valley? I believe Resident Michael Eli shared his concern. Board of Water Supply says that they checked with their Water Resource and Capital Projects Team, and they're not doing any drilling in the area. Board of Water Supply does not own any land in the immediate area. From checking records, it is all privately owned, except for a small lot owned by the state. DPP is unable to verify if there are any projects in the area, uh, because we need exact address or more information on the location. That's all I have, but I'm here to take any questions.
Thanks, Don. I appreciate that. So yeah, that was actually investigated. That was Ramadan's property, and he does have a permit with, uh, uh, Don Chan confirmed that. Any, um, going back to, uh, online first, let's do Nani. Nani, are you there? You have questions for Don, or your hand is just up? Okay, um, Johnny May Perry, Board Member Perry?
It's, uh, Don, will you be at the Mayor's meeting on March twenty-seven at seven PM at Nanakuli Beach Park? Okay. Secondly, I looked on the website, um, the Neighborhood Commission Office of that, uh, Neighborhood Board to get acquainted, what's the rules and policies and so forth. So there is a, uh, there's, is something on there for the Neighborhood Board to review, and it's from DPP. Um, the last, the last report is September twenty fifteen. Is that the most current? It talks about like, um, 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 the permitting process, what it means, the conditional use permit. Are you familiar with that? If not, it's on the NCO website for Neighborhood Boards to read.
Uh, I can check it out. Twenty fifteen sounds pretty dated, so let me check, and then we can see if we need to update that information.
Okay, thank you so much for your help. See you in March.
See you in March.
Okay.
Thank you, Johnny May. Any other board members? Board member Dana?
Aloha, Don. Uh, my question is in regards to what is the city's or the Mayor's comprehensive plan to address homelessness in the Wainai Moko? Specifically in the Wainai District area?
Oh, I, I wish I had more details about that. I would, um, defer to the Office of Housing under the Mayor's Office. I can get more information. There might, I think there's some links to some reports. So I can get that information and share it with the board.
So to my understanding, the last, um, point in time count, there was approximately seven hundred plus individuals that were houseless living on the beaches in our community. Again, like, we have not heard any direction on how we're going to address the ongoing gentrification of our, um, community by those who have wealth to purchase, because a lot of us cannot buy into homeownership within our community. So it would be, um, helpful to understand the city's, um, position on how we address the needs of our community, because they are vulnerable. A lot of individuals that live on, in these spaces are family members. To many of the families living in houses. So just having the conversation and being, you know, being Pono in how we address the needs of our most vulnerable is important. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Board member, um, Joe Jordan?
Aloha, Don. Um, so since the Mayor's going to have this meeting on, I guess, March twenty-seventh, will the new city homeless coordinator who was appointed two weeks ago be in attendance as well?
Um, that he should be. It just depends on scheduling. I think the intention is for all of the, the directors to be available. Uh, but we can find out, we can send that information if he's going to be attending.
Yeah, if you can let our Chair know in advance, because I would really like to hear from this new homeless coordinator on what the city's plan is as well as what Board Member Dana Newman requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board, Board Member Joe, Jordan. Um, go ahead, community, back to community.
Aloha, Kapua. Aloha, Don. Thank you for coming out. Um, I just wanted to put it into.
Um I just wanted to put it into space here that uh like our previous board uh was discussing when we had Miss um geez. Can't remember name, the the North Shore um Chair, Ahale Eva. Yeah, Pahinui. So Wainai needs the Wainai Water Management Designation Area. I believe that because when we have people that have the wealth that can buy property or can do development, it gives us that opportunity to have a say. And that's what we need is to be able to have a say so that we know who we should and should not be voting for. So that we know who's right and who's wrong for us in our community. So I would like for the mayor's office to support the Wainai's Water Management Designation Area when that comes up in front of him in any manner or shape. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Okay, one more community and then we have to move on to the next.
Aloha, Don, uh Kamai Salsido. Uh the concern, you know, you guys trying to address the homeless, yeah? I have family members out there. I open my home, but I do have rules. They do not follow the rules. I do not choose to change, but do the same old, same old, be addicted to drugs and verbally abuse. If they do that to me, what makes you think they're not gonna do that to those who's trying to help them? They don't want to follow rules. So that's the choice. Choice is the individual, what they do. We cannot control the choice. We can give them love unconditionally, but I don't have to take the verbally or physical abuse. So it's been twenty plus years, state and city could not crack it. Crack your hali first, clean must be in front of y'alls before you push more in ours. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Don, and we do appreciate um your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're gonna be moving on to the next and we have um council member Tupola.
Good evening, guys. Thank you, board, thank you, community. My name is Kika Tupenny, I'm council member Tupola's uh community case manager. Um I just want to thank everybody who came out to our community cleanup, our very first community cleanup that we had here at Wainai District Park. Um especially Rep. Maroka and his team. Um and the sports teams that did come out along with the youth challenge. Uh it was a really good, successful cleanup. Um I think it was long overdue, we had some concerns about the issues that are happening at the tennis courts, the fields for the sports teams and all that, so. We did heavy outreach in that area, which was really sad to meet some of the people there. Um but yeah, we did heavy outreach, still doing heavy outreach. The cleanup was successful. What we're doing now is after restoring the areas is we're continuing to work with DPR, DFM and all of the city entities to make sure that the place stays the way that it is after being cleaned and making sure that when they say beautification to the area, that we're continuing it not just there, but in every place that we're starting to restore. So we do need the community's help for sure, that if you guys see something, please say something and let us know because if we don't know, then we we don't know where we have to fix things, which where we noticed a lot of things where it's told to us to last minute and and it takes too long for us to to fix it. So if we can just get more feedback from the community for sure. Um feel free to call me directly, actually, um if you need to. Uh another thing that we would like to thank everybody for is um we started our R three program, which is our homeless outreach. Um we started in the Nanakuli area and the Maile area and we would like to thank everybody who's been in communication with us with your volunteer uh your food, being able to be the word of mouth and um understanding the resources that we have to do uh to put together to 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 make this program work. Um it's very grassroots, so a lot of this comes from volunteer um volunteer people in the community. And we also try to get a lot of state and city community um outreach, but it's really heavy where we don't get a lot of, yeah, feedback or help, so the community's help is very, very important. Um I would like to piggyback on a lot of the um concerns on RISE. Um council member wanted to share that she wants to remind everyone of the letter that she stated and wrote out to RISE. Um I believe Carla is online, so I just want to address this, that she just wants to share that. That letter was to to make sure that you guys are for the people and the community and that you're being transparent with the program that you're bringing into this place because we asked many times and we also met with you directly that if you were going to meet with anybody and the list that you did meet with, we asked that you met with the community that lived on Nohule Road first. Um so please, 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 if you can, I know that there's still room open to meet with the community. So we would love for you guys to do that and if you need our help, we would love to do that as well. Um other than that, I don't have anything else to report, but I'm here for questions.
Board member Perry.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Kika, thank you for joining us tonight. You know, with what's going on in the Oval Office, I'm really concerned that those programs that address homelessness, funds will be drastically cut. So I would urge all those nonprofit that deal with homeless um clients to now start placing them in more permanent housing rather than temporary housing. Things, we need to pivot, people, and you need to be engaged with what's happening in the Oval Office. This man i- is, he's gonna do things that will save money. It doesn't matter who they cut and what they do. They're they're not traditionally handling the White House as normal. So I I I urge all you nonprofit that dealing with homeless clients to put them in permanent housing now before the cutbacks come down the road. Cause it's coming, people, and the state cannot support all this program. We just cannot. And if what's gonna go up, everything, property tax, food, city services, state services, everything gonna go up for the for um shortfall of federal funding. So please, if you really care about your clients, put them in permanent housing. Otherwise, they're gonna be re-traumatized. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny May. Um for myself, Kika, um what's your call? I was talking to Krishna at the cleanup and we would like to, as well as Rep. Maroka and hopefully um council member Tupola can help with signage of recognizing that park as the historical 442 Park. So we're kind of moving forward with that, as of course as well with you, Senator Adicord. Um it is a significant park. Um some of you guys are too young to know that park, the meaning of it, but it was the training ground for the 442 Go For Broke. And that is the headquarters there where the um the Children's Center is. So we'd like to kind of help with recognition of that park. Board member Perry.
So going back to cleanups and mahalo for doing the cleanups. But there also has to be ongoing kind of planning with the city on trash collection. There's just so much trash all over the place. Every single beach has trash and it's just visible all the time. You can drive by, they pick it, pick up one day, the next day, there's trash again. And then just in terms of like, we have to remember that there's a large number of nonprofits within our community that are being affected by the transition of our government. And so there's validity in what Johnny May is saying. There's some cuts coming down the line that will affect many nonprofits in our communities, specifically nonprofits that work with native Hawaiian communities. And these community, we're the largest native Hawaiian community in Wainai, so we can snicker all we want, but we have to have discussions about how do we, how do we take care of our community? The Hawaiian community and the general community at large. So it's a valid um concern. I would like for the, you know, our city council member to, you know, actively make us feel better about the direction that we're headed into. Just like the governor, just like the um our council member, just like our senator. Make our community feel uplifted because change is coming.
I'm sorry, I have to stop it here, we only have like six more minutes. I would like to have BW is here because he's waited here for a while, so at least we can get through it. Please, I apologize, everyone.
Uh good evening, Neighborhood Board and Community. Uh my name is Koa Ihilo, that's actually my name. Um for the month of February, we had two main breaks. Uh one on the eleventh at Uhulu Road and one on the nineteenth at Ala Mahiku. Uh general water announcements, Board of Water is hiring. We have open positions for engineering, information technology, customer care and administrative roles. Uh enjoy great benefits, job security and opportunity, opportunity to grow and make a difference. It's time to turn the valve on a new career. Uh apply today at BoardOfWaterSupply.com/jobs, backslash jobs or calls eight oh eight seven four eight five one six zero. Any question?
Thank you. Um we are not gonna take questions right now because we have to move through. Um thank you, sir, I do appreciate that. Um we are moving on to U S Army Garrison. U S Army Garrison, um Navy liaison, only liaison, Navy liaison right now, next month, right? Okay, um. Word community reports, um I got a report from city that our Thursday DOT meeting has to be rescheduled. Um Waheleani, are you still holding your Hawaiian Affairs? They also sent out a um notice of that, it needs to be rescheduled.
Okay, this is first I've heard about it, I guess we have to reschedule Dana. Thank you, Philip.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, it just they didn't meet the requirements, there was some some glitch in the email. Okay, so there will be no uh DOT and no Hawaiian uh meeting this Thursday. Uh Parks and Ocean, second Tuesday, Housing and Homeless Chair. Uh third, third, third Tuesday, Natural Resources, uh there is not scheduled for that. Hawaiian Affairs, um next week, next month, first Thursday, Education and Health, third Tuesday. And Community Service Committee E A D. Uh Johnny May Perry uh can be reached. Concerns, please email her at wineib569@gmail. Okay? Um we have three minutes left in this, well, let's go ahead with our eleven point one. Um the next regular board meeting will be here at April first, twenty twenty five. Um if you're interested in attending any Neighborhood Security Watches, please uh in get in touch with us so we can connect you. Community consciousness and values be part of solution, not the problem. Are we, is there anything else we? Okay, that would be it for our um Neighborhood Board, we're gonna call it adjourned at eight fifty eight, thank you.